Good evening. Welcome to the September 16th, 2019 Meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I'll just note the absence of Counselor Wedlake. He's out tonight. And also, our city attorney, John Dormand, is going to be a few minutes late, but we do have Assistant City Attorney Dennis McGrath here to make sure we're all legal. So, all right, we're going to start off with a presentation by Chief Watts in recognition of Carrie Bales for 20 years of service to the Stillwater Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carrie Bales. Come up, please. Carrie Bales is a veteran who proudly served in the Marine Corps prior to her career with the Stillwater Police Department. She began her career as a police officer on July 15th of 1999. Carrie served as the School Resource Officer at Stillwater Public Schools from November 2002 until her retirement on July 31st of this year. Some of Carrie's accomplishments include her service as Director on the National Association of School Resource Officers Board of Directors. In 2012, she founded the Oklahoma Association of School Resource Officers and served as the President of the organization until 2017. Carrie received her Bachelor's Degree in Political Science from Oklahoma State University, and she's currently pursuing a Master's Degree in Public Affairs through the University of Missouri. Carrie continues to serve the citizens of Stillwater as a records technician in our records unit. In service of Carrie's 20 years of dedication to the citizens of Stillwater, I'm presenting her with this plaque which states, "In recognition and sincere appreciation for 20 years of distinguished service as a Stillwater Police Officer." Congratulations, Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you very much, Carrie, for your service to the city. Okay, that takes us to Item 4 on the Consent Docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or items you'd like to see removed from the consent docket?
Mayor, I would like to remove Item C and Item F, please.
Item C and Item F will be removed from the consent docket. Further questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve the consent docket minus Item C and F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus Items C and F. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the remaining consent docket items are approved. Public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing, I don't have anyone signed up for that tonight, so we'll jump down to six, and we'll talk about the items we just removed from the consent docket. So, on Item C, we have approved purchase and installation of equipment for new patrol vehicles for the police department at a cost of $189,419.68. Chief Watts is here. Just wanted to make clarification on what that's for.
That's for, in FY '20, council approved $410,000 for us to buy and outfit eight new police vehicles for patrol. In August, on August 5th, council approved the purchase of the eight vehicles, and we're wanting to use the bulk of the remainder of that funds to pay for the equipment that goes in them and the installation, lights, sirens, cages, radios, all of the equipment that goes with them.
All the fun stuff.
So, it was all approved in the FY '20 budget. We're just asking for approval to go ahead and install that equipment in there.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselors, is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve Item C. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item C. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. And then, on Item F from the consent docket, approved bid recommendation for full-depth pavement replacement as part of fiscal year 19 transportation five-year pavement management plan, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts. Monty Carnes is here to provide us a little bit more information about that item.
So, excuse me, we only received two bids on this project. Both of the companies are local-based companies. This is a contract where we issue work orders, and we have so many panels or spots in streets that we want to have replaced, so, you know, we may do one panel, we may do a section of, you know, maybe 50 feet, maybe do one side of a road or both sides of the road, and just rest the streets in good shape, but we have a few spot places. We'll put several of those together, we'll do a work order, and we'll give it to the contractor. And that process has been going on for quite a number of years. We call it deferred maintenance. Last year's contract, we did not fully utilize because the contractor was unable to work all of those into his schedule, so we had some money left over that we rolled over into this year's pavement management. These bids are very, very close. We'd like to award them to both contractors. We've talked to both contractors, they're both okay with both of them having the project. The way the enterprises are structured, because of the, what I'd call, appurtenances, if you have a manhole to adjust a grade, or a valve box cover, or things, or drainage inlet, some of those types of things, one contractor would be less expensive than the other. We'll kind of take that into consideration. We'll also take into consideration their workload that they have, and we think that gives us a better chance of expending all of those funds, because we sorely need to be putting money into the streets, and this gives us the best opportunity to do that, and also the most cost-effective use of the dollars. Happy to answer any other questions.
Counselors?
Thank you. That's a great opportunity to get you worked on and be cost-effective. Thank you.
Will it be up to you all to decide who gets which section?
Ultimately, yes. We'll have conversations with both of them and look at what their workloads are and work it out.
Okay. Thank you, Monty. Counselors, is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve Item F on the consent docket. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item F from the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. All right, that takes us to Item 7, Public Hearings. Excuse me. Item 7A, receive public comment regarding request from map amendment to rezone properties located at 717 West 7th Avenue, 713 West 7th Avenue, and 709 South Ramsey Street from RSS to RTM. This is CC-19-134. Mr. McGrath, did we have good notice on these items?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. We're going to follow a little bit of a different process with our public hearings on these today. We're going to have staff sort of open it up, and then the actual applicant or representative will make the presentation, correct?
Yes.
All right, Lance, kick us off.
Thank you. Lance Gross with the Community Development Department. And the application before you tonight is a map amendment, as you mentioned. They're wanting or requesting for the rezoning from RSS to RTM, and the hatch pattern on the map indicates the subject site. It's on the southeast corner of 7th and Ramsey. And this is a view, it's basically a bird's eye view, looking to the north. The orange boundary is the subject site. 8th Avenue is on the bottom of the photo. 7th is at the top. Ramsey is on the left-hand side, and Hester is on the right-hand side. At this time, I'd like to bring Stephen Gose up front so he can go through his application.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Stephen Gose with Gose &amp; Associates, 113 East 8th, here on behalf of the applicant, Presley LLC. As the report shows and Lance covered, we're asking to change this from RSS to RTM. There's RTM immediately to the east, a lot, if we skipped a lot immediately to the south. Correct here. Right at the end of the arrow, there's a little piece, it's a playground for the daycare that's to the south that's zoned RSS. There's a little strip of RSS on the west, but RTM just beyond that, and RMI to the north. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be high-density, which can include multifamily with gross densities between 12 and 150 units an acre, as well as convenience and neighborhood-scale commercial, and access that transition area between small lot and large lot, single-family, and the more residential areas. Sites currently occupied by four single-family structures that were all constructed in 1935 to 1952. So, they'd like to develop this with multifamily on the lower end of those densities. It's about 12 or 13 units per acre within that, so. I know that's not quite pertinent to the request, but RTM, it's in the adjacent area, so if there's any questions, I can answer those.
Counselors, any questions for Mr. Gose?
How will the parking work on these units?
The site plan we have right now has parking, there's onsite parking and alley parking, and then a few off-street, or onsite parking spaces that the code allows a credit of half a space to the onsite. So, if there's 10 street parking, we can get credit for five of those. So, there will be a mixture of both.
So, a mixture of parking in the front, parking in the alley, and onsite parking?
Correct.
You know, when we previously approved apartments on the other side of 6th Street, we asked for the parking to be in the back.
So, right now, the site plan we have has the building, two buildings oriented kind of in the north-south, three units each. One's facing the alley, one's facing Ramsey, and then there's a strip of parking on the south end of that. So, the Ramsey side will look like townhomes, three units, three front doors, some onsite parking, and then off-street parking to the, on the south end of the lot.
Okay. So, it's not smack in front of the building?
Correct. There's a buffer.
Counselors, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. At this point, I will open the public hearing. We don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing. And I will ask Lance, I think, for Planning Commission recommendation on this item.
Yes, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of three to zero.
Excellent. Counselors, any further questions, or discussion, or motions on this item?
No more questions.
Certainly seems like a use that fits in the area, although, you know, the questions about actual design of site layout and that sort of thing are going to be later in the process.
They're not ours. They're not ours. Yep. Which is always frustrating, but it's the way it is.
Yep. This is true.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve CC-19-134.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this rezoning. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. Item 7B, receive public comment regarding request from Smoking Barrels Dispensary LLC for a specific use permit to operate medical marijuana dispensary at 601 West 6th Avenue located in the CG Commercial General District. This is CC-19-135. Mr. McGrath, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gross?
Yes, thank you. The second application before you tonight is for a specific use permit to allow a medical marijuana dispensary. The hatch pattern on the map indicates the subject site. It's located on the southwest corner of 6th and Knoblock. This is a bird's eye view looking to the southeast, south-southeast, basically, and the yellow boundary indicates the subject site. And it's just this one building. Sam's Southern Eatery is adjacent to its all-one property owner. But right now, I'd like to ask up the applicant to talk about their application.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, counsel. My name is Jody Rathluff. I'm here representing Smoking Barrel. As you can see, or could see on the map in front of you, it's a small building, so our business is just planning pretty much in in and out, in, purchase your product, out. We will be sharing parking with Sam's Southern Eatery, so I believe we'll have plenty of parking for the type of business that we're proposing here, and there should be some onsite parking also available, but for the size of the building, we're thinking that we probably have plenty of parking. So, if you have any questions?
Counselors?
And Sam's is really excited about sharing their parking?
Well, I'm not sure, but it is, it's a shared parking between the two buildings, and our landlord owns both buildings.
Okay.
So, this was worked out through him. So, I believe, yeah, I believe we've come to an understanding with them. Any other questions I could answer?
Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will open this public hearing, and there's no one signed up to speak, so I'll close it. Lance, what was Planning Commission's recommendation on this item?
Yes, once again, Planning Commission made a recommendation for approval by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you, Lance. I do have one quick question. What is the state requirement around distance from school? Is it 500 feet? Is it 1,000 feet? Do we know?
It's 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet?
Yes.
Does the church school at the Methodist Church count? Are those both outside of 1,000 feet? Those two schools at Duck and, there's schools in the Presbyterian Church and the Methodist Church right there, right? At Duck and, they're outside. Okay.
Yeah, and it's primarily for private or public schools, but also for elementary, middle school, and high schools.
Sure. I just didn't know if those counted, because I think like the Methodist Church is like a school preschool site, right? A public school's preschool site? But it's outside 1,000 feet, so it doesn't matter. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Counselors, any further questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve CC-19-135. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this specific use permit. Please vote. With a vote of three to one, with Counselor Darlington dissenting, that item is approved. All right, Item 8 on general orders. 8A, Lake McMurtry Quarterly Report. I think Jill Van Egmond is here to present on behalf of the lake?
We have our whole crew here.
Excellent, yeah. Good to see you all.
Nice to see you.
It's a nice evening out at the lake, probably. This is a bad time for you guys to be in here.
Definitely. Although, we are thrilled to be here, for sure. Okay, so, we're excited to be here. Sorry. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here to report on behalf of Lake McMurtry and all of the exciting things that we have going out there, going on out there. First, we want to say thank you for helping us to fix our road after the floods. We were down about six weeks before we were fully operational, but helping us get the roads back open really made a huge difference so that the public could actually access the west-side recreation area, so we want to thank the city of Stillwater and your quick reaction and response to that. Tonight, we have our whole crew here. I think most of you know Jared Avalas, our Assistant Director, but we also have Laura Gibson, our Development Coordinator, and we have Dawn Searls, our Maintenance Supervisor. They'll all be contributing and sharing some of the exciting things they're working on out at Lake McMurtry. I just wanted to let you know that even though we were down a little bit and we were closed for several weeks, we still finished our year strong with over 21,000 estimated visitors to the park, between our annual pass visitors, our day pass visitors, our campers, and our pavilion rentals. We also had 16 different states represented from our visitors and three different countries, so we were very excited to see how many people we have that are from outside of the Stillwater community that choose to come and visit at Lake McMurtry. Now that we're going into our slow season, we have some maintenance initiatives that we'll be tackling so that we go back into the spring strong and better than ever. Dawn Searls will share some of the things that she'll be working on during the offseason.
Hi, I'm Dawn. On the west side, we will be doing perimeter campsites and expansion. We have a campsite that is not being utilized at the moment because the road washed out. We're going to try to make it a hike-in-only and clean it up. The Orange Trail, as you guys are probably fully aware of, it has been worked on for numerous years now. We do have a mile of it pretty much done, and people are riding on it. It is not fully opened at this moment, though. We are going to go in the beginning of fall and finish it up, and we have about seven more miles that need to be done throughout the winter. Park access, as you guys probably are aware of, driving in there, the road does need trimmed to the west side, all the way in. On the east side, we have RV pads that need some attention, new gravel leveling, and new sideboards. So, we're going to be doing that. And the security, in the maintenance yard, as you guys are aware, we were robbed, and we are going to be upgrading that. And in the early spring, we're going to be getting a fence put in as well as security cameras. In the adventure camp area down by the east pavilion, we have a little spot picked up that we want to clear out and make a new outdoor classroom, as you wish. I don't know what you really want to call it. It's like an outdoor classroom for the kids. Thank you.
Hey, Dawn, before you leave, I know a lot of that work is done, some of that work on the trails especially is done by community volunteers. How much of the work you guys do is either volunteer or you guys hire out?
At the point we're at now, most of it could be volunteer, but getting volunteers to help is really slim in that type of weather.
Okay.
Yeah, sometimes it's more of a hassle to get them out there, because it's not, I mean, we're talking, what, six miles out? Yeah, we're talking about six miles out. It's in the gate by the gun range is where we're having to go.
Okay.
Yeah, but right now, pretty much if it's cut, we just need to clear the brush, but getting in there right now, we'd be ate up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And we'll be holding some volunteer workdays in the upcoming months, once it cools off a little bit, and we feel like our volunteers will have a better experience.
It's very thoughtful.
Well, thank you for having us. This is actually surprising. When we were practicing this, none of this showed up, so this is exciting. First off, I would like to introduce our newest event. I'm sure you guys have heard either from social media or just around. We will be having Steak at the Lake. November 1st, the ribeye becomes the official state steak of Oklahoma, and to honor that and also raise funds for the park, we are holding Steak at the Lake on State Steak Day, Friday, November 1st. We are teaming up with the one and only Chef Jeff of TS Fork, along with local beef producers to put on an event. We've already sold tickets and sponsorship, so we're pretty excited and pretty confident that this is going to be a successful event. As I'm sure you guys are aware, some of our staple events that we do have at the lake, our Santa in the Park is one of them. Every December, we have a holiday party kind of thing where there's hot chocolate cookies, hay rides through the RV loop that we decorate, and of course, pictures with Santa, as you can see. Santa was a big hit, this past Santa in the Park. Every year, we've had the opportunity to grow more and more, so we're pretty excited that we think this year is going to be better than ever, weather-dependent. Another staple event is Spring Celebration. Spring Celebration is a great event for local clubs and organizations to come out and promote health and wellness, environmental education, and conservation to Stillwater and the surrounding community. And of course, catchapalooza, which we adopted from the Boomer Blast Family Fishing Tournament in 2017, though we have kind of put our own spin on it, we have definitely made it our goal to keep that family tradition going and encourage that, and also educate on how sport fishing actually enhances fishing conservation. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
And if you haven't gotten your tickets to Steak at the Lake, you can go onto our website and purchase them. They are available right now. Senator Casey Murdock, who actually wrote the bill, will also be joining us, and so we are really excited to have him out. We've also been trying to be efficient with our time going into our slow season. We've been going through some strategic planning exercises. We have been identifying some different programs that we can implement in the immediate with our current facilities, and then we've been talking with studio architecture, and they are helping us to create a master plan where we want to be in three, five, and 10 years, and really what impact we want to make in the community. So, we're really excited about this process, and with our fundraising efforts, this is going to be a huge key. Part of the process is reviewing our mission statement. Our former mission statement was fantastic when we first started, when we first started operating the park, but in looking at our identity now and where we plan to be in the next 10 years, we decided that we needed to revise it a little bit to really capture who we are. So, our new mission statement is to enrich quality of life by providing opportunities to engage in sustainable outdoor recreation, environmental education, and nature conservation. Studies have shown that there is a tremendous benefit, both physically and mentally, when you're outside in nature. So, the health and wellness component is one thing that we really want to focus on as we move forward, and we feel like our new mission statement really sums up who we are and who we're going to be. Jared has been working on some exciting new program ideas, some of the things that we'll be able to launch immediately, and then some of the things that we hope to launch within the next three years, and we'll let him share about that.
Hi, counsel. Jared Avalas, good to see you all again. I always appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and again, appreciate the partnership with you guys and helping us with our roads this summer. That flood was much of a challenge, and just can't thank you enough for that help. As Jill mentioned, we have been going through a strategic planning process to kind of help us refine and utilize Lake McMurtry to its full potential. Part of our new mission is to enrich the quality of life of our community members. We feel like, I'm going to quote Jill here, "Lake McMurtry is much more than just a lake. We can utilize it for various benefits for the community." We've tested this theory already with our adventure camp. As you guys know, we've had two successful summers. I'm happy to report, we had another successful year. Our registration nearly doubled this year, and we hope to continue to expand that. And I got to give thanks to our camp staff and volunteers that helped us create a wonderful, fun environment for the kids, and so we're looking forward to next year's adventure camp. As we move forward with our mission, we want to utilize the park and leverage its resources for various things. We want to engage folks in health and wellness, environmental education, and we want to do that with new programming that's very low-cost and very accessible, especially to underserved populations in the community. I'll briefly touch on some of the programming. I won't go into extreme depth, but one program we're developing right now is self-guided tours at the lake. If we can get underserved populations to the lake, we're going to create a booklet, and in this booklet, it's basically going to be a scavenger hunt where they get to go around and find landmarks, and each landmark is going to be an activity, whether it's environmental education, mental health, or physical activity. It doesn't cost anything for this program once you're in the park, and you don't have to register and sign up ahead of time, so we want to make our program accessible to everyone. We also want to, again, beef up our volunteer program. They are a huge support for our trail system out there. Our trails would not be maintained or created or built without them. Not only do we want to create a volunteer program that adds more volunteers, but we want to educate those volunteers on how their efforts helps to improve the integrity of the park environment, kind of enviro-teering, as we're kind of calling it. And then, another topic that is very personal to each one of our staff members is mental health. As you guys know, September is Suicide Awareness Month, and our staff has been engaging in some awareness efforts on social media, that nature immersion connection for folks. We really, really want to push this more for our community. We want to bring people out for mental health hikes. We want to go out into the community and talk about why it's good to get out into the natural environment. We have this awesome green space right here in our backyard, so let's utilize it. And then, we're going to go through and identify various agencies and partner with them. Oklahoma Wildlife Department to bring in fishing education clinics. We want to partner with senior citizen organizations to bring them out for lunches or tai chi in the park, low-impact activities for them. And then, we also want to look towards educators, partner with them to develop curriculum-based education, so that way, these kids can come out and do field trips, whether it's homeschool, private school, or public school. So, those are just a few of the low-hanging fruits that we're reaching for right now, and we're hoping next spring we can deliver on some of those for you guys.
So, as you can see, we have a lot of really exciting things happening out at Lake McMurtry, a lot of great changes on the horizon, and really just building on what we already have. So, thank you again for this time, and we would entertain any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Counselors, questions?
I just have one comment. Kind of the new fanciest term for treatment for depression and anxiety is awareness rehabilitation therapy. Okay. And it's tran- And it's translated into "go outside." That's all it means.
Well, we found an organization, and they're called Park Prescriptions, and there are actually, I think, 200 parks across the nation that are partnering with medical providers where the physicians are actually writing prescriptions to go to the park. And so that's something that we're exploring to address just that.
I don't have a question either. I just, it's always, I'm always motivated every time I hear you guys speak, and I'm embarrassed that I don't utilize the lake as much as I should, so I will definitely come out and visit and do that. That's right, exactly. So myself and to the community, I really urge people to go out there and really, it's a treasure that we have, and it's something that we really need to appreciate, and thank you for all your efforts.
And one that's clearly in good hands, seriously. It's really impressive always to see your energy that you're bringing to this resource, our community resource, and just know that you guys are pulling in all these different entities and collaborators and just dreaming big. It's really exciting to see.
Yeah, would absolutely echo all that. Really impressive to see your team and the work you guys are doing. Jill, I know I actually owe you an email, but I want to ask while you're here, what is the city can be doing more to help, you know, come alongside the efforts you guys are putting into the park?
Well, we would love to have a conversation and figure out how we could actually provide transportation to some of the families that are not able to make it out to the park. That's one of the things that we feel is a hindrance for a lot of our underserved families. But if we could even create Field Trip Saturdays where we are able to provide a van or some type of bus or something so that we could take families out so they could just enjoy the day together at the park, if we could have a conversation and figure out how we might be able to make that happen, I think, then that just expands our just impact in the community.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Awesome.
We'll do that. We'll talk.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys for being here.
Everyone did a great job. Appreciate it.
And the slides worked. All right, that takes us to item 8B, Recommendation for Professional Services for Engineering Services for Stillwater Creek Watershed Management Plan Needs Assessment, Approval of the Advisory Committee, and Authorization of the City Manager to Execute Contract Documents, CC-19-133. Mr. Carnes.
Good evening again. Monty Carnes, Director of City of Engineering. Previously, we have discussed the need for a Stillwater Creek Master Plan, actually calling that a watershed management plan now because it encompasses so many things. We've been in negotiations with MEASAC for most of the summer. It's back up a little bit and talk about how we got to MEASAC. We had shortlisted three firms, or maybe four firms, to provide us stormwater services previously. We sent solicitations to all those firms. We also sent one to Dewberry Davis. Dewberry Davis is a national firm. They actually do a lot of work for FEMA. They're one of FEMA's contractors and manage the flood hazard area, flood maps all across the country. They had an office, still have an office in Tulsa. They have done work for Stillwater. They did the last revision in '07 to the maps. Very familiar with Stillwater. We thought they would, certainly worth getting a proposal from. They were interested, and right up to the, just the day before we were having interviews, they notified us that they had made the decision not to provide civil engineering services in the state of Oklahoma, and they were ceasing that activity and withdrew their application. One of our other firms had partnered with them. One of the firms we looked at, a local firm, felt like it was a larger project than they could handle. They declined, and that left us with MEASAC and Associates, which we are pleased with MEASAC. They have done work for us in the past. They've done good work. MEASAC is well-known across the state in this region for this type of work. They do a lot of work in the city of Tulsa. They've done Norman. They've done counties and very well capable of doing this. So we would recommend them without any qualifications for doing the work. I'd like to quickly highlight some of the things that we're going to be looking at. Obviously kickoff meetings. We'll have a citizens group that we've given you the names of the individuals that we see being on the steering committee for this. There'll be a public information involvement and education piece. One of the things that MEASAC will do is they will come in, review our documents, look at our data, and those types of things, so they know kind of where to start, see what we have, and then what we still need in that regard. One of the things we are excited about is they're going to do a storm system inventory. We have some idea of what we have, and we have some things on our GIS system. We don't make those public because we're not real sure how accurate they are, but we do use those internally to give us some idea. But we do not know the size, and we don't know the exact location of all of those facilities. We've estimated there's about 4,100 structures that need to be identified and determine what size they are. They will not do a condition assessment. They'll only be telling us what we have and where we have it. And that's the storm sewers that are buried. They will look at the open channel structures, and they will inventory those, and they will also do an assessment on what condition they are in as part of this work. Probably one of the more important aspects is we're starting to look at water quality as part of our MS4 permit requirements. We see those requirements being more and more stringent as things come down the pike, including waters that are listed as being impaired. And, excuse me, we have a, there are various groups that come in and check those waters for various parameters. I think it's important that we have somebody that's on our side that's kind of double-checking that so that we don't have any discussions or any qualms about what the conditions actually are. And we can say to our citizens, yes, we agree, or we disagree, and these are the reasons why. Yes, sir.
When you're talking about water quality in that context, you're not talking about the water we drink.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about the stormwater runoff, which is EPA's that started many, many years ago. When it started cleaning up the waters, the first things they went for was what they called point source pollutions, which were wastewater treatment plants, industries that discharge water, those types of things, the things that were easy to get a handle on, and spent several decades cleaning those up. Then they started on the non-point solutions, which is generally stormwater runoff. They define stormwater pollution as anything that's in the water that isn't water. So that's trash, that's sediments. Sediments are the big things they go after, but we look at other things as well. Look at bacteria, we look at pH, look for chemicals, those types of things as well. So those are the type of things we'll be looking for. And then if they're at a certain level, DEQ will come in and say, okay, you were allowed so much of that pollutant to go in, and then we'd have to take stringent measures. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm just, this is a subject that I didn't really know anything about at all until I started talking about it with you in this context. But, I mean, these are things like when we talk about not letting your grass clippings sit out on the road and get washed down into the sewer systems and, you know, runoff from construction projects where dirt and that sort of thing is being washed into the... I don't think we, as a community probably, or as individuals, think much about those kinds of things, but that's the Department of Environmental Quality comes and tests and checks our stormwater runoff, and we've got to be able to control at some level how much
That's correct.
...grass clipping and the fertilizer that comes off of people's yard and all that kind of stuff that gets washed away.
The concern with the, I'm sorry. We, we, I didn't mean to...
Just making that up.
The concern with the grass clippings is that they will biodegrade and use up the oxygen in the water. And so you do want to keep them on site because, you know, then you don't, they biodegrade and actually act as a fertilizer on your lawn. It's a matter of, we don't want them to wash off. So if you leave them in the grass, we have a better chance of them staying there and not in the street.
This study will also look at those issues and make sure that we're staying where we need to stay when it comes to...
It's to kind of get us a baseline
Okay.
And start down that road because a lot of these requirements aren't here yet. We see them coming five, 10, 15 years down the road, and we're trying to be prepared for some of those things coming along. Just a quick aside, when I was here in the 80s, they were starting to talk about this, and they were talking about multi-tiered cities and the size Stillwater was. You know, they weren't going to get around to those until the 2000s, and I go, oh, never gonna have to worry about that. So here, oops, here I am. Sorry, but that'll be, that'll be a component that we're doing. The other thing that I think's exciting, we will start working on the stormwater fee assessment feasibility study, looking at what should our stormwater fee be to adequately maintain the channels, adequately maintain our storm sewer system, adequately look at our MS4, what those requirements could be, and then start looking at what our capital improvement projects could be and how we might fund those. So those are the, those are the major items that we'll be looking at. Again, we'll have a citizen steering committee that'll be working with us on that, with staff, helping us make sure we get that correct. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Monty, when you say a citizen steering committee, are you referring to the people that are listed in the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
And we're open to additional individuals.
Okay, that's one of the other, it's one of the alternatives on the approval to have other members. And have you advertised for people who are interested, or...
No, we have not widely advertised. We sat down and looked at what areas we thought should be on that and kind of covered it that way.
So you kind of have some key stakeholders between staff and OSU and...
Yes, ma'am.
And RCS, Payne County, so kind of key stakeholders, but maybe not necessarily community members so much? Does that...
I think that would be a fair assessment, and I don't know that that was necessarily intentional, but we just wanted to make sure we got, like you said, the key stakeholders...
Well, I mean, it's a fairly technical project. I don't know that I necessarily disagree with having key stake, I mean, a key stakeholder committee as opposed to a wide community stakeholder. I mean, I think it's one where there's a lot of terminology to understand and, I mean, to really contribute and be a part of it. You probably want those key stakeholders for sure. I guess the question is, how do those key stakeholders then transmit that information, or how does that become transparent to the larger community?
And again, we intend to have the public education, the public meetings, and would certainly be looking for wide input and wide advertisement for that.
Yeah, I think it makes sense as an advisory committee, folks who are involved or knowledgeable in the field, and then as you go forward with the plan and bring more public input involved, that we then get sort of the wider public involvement. I think there's just a lot of, there's a lot of education probably that needs to happen as part of these things, just again, to let people know what these issues even are. I mean, I think most of us as homeowners don't even think about the fact that, I think we have, well, what is it, a dollar that we contribute in stormwater?
I think for residents, it's, I believe it's capped at a dollar. Commercial is capped at $55. So some of our really large shopping centers are capped at $55. In other communities, it'd be considerably more than that.
It is, when people ask about the stormwater drainage issues in Stillwater, one of the things I mention is I think we pay about a dollar, most of us pay about a dollar, to deal with these issues in Stillwater, which is probably one of the reasons it's not in the best shape. So, but that, I mean, that's an education thing that I think will definitely want to be part of this as we go forward.
I'll tell you, it generates, that fee generates less than $300,000 a year. And we have a lot of staff out of that and our maintenance as well, so it's...
I agree that this is a specialized area and that these people are experts. And I would also say, who knows who in the citizenry would be interested in this? And it would be, I mean, if somebody really wanted to be on this steering committee, would you turn them away?
I can't imagine we'd turn anyone away.
I'm just trying to decide which alternate I would like to vote for.
Well, I mean, is it possible that if there are folks who show up and say, hey, I'd really like to be involved there, that we could add them to the committee at a later date?
I think so. I think if we had a large number of people, we might want to look at, at, see if we're somehow reducing that number so that it's not too large a committee to work with, and make sure that if we have multiple people with the same viewpoints, maybe pairing that down.
Sure.
That would be my only suggestion there.
Yeah, I really, I see that committee as being, a smaller committee would probably be, I mean, not exclusively small, but small enough that they can actually get down to brass tacks a little bit. I think especially given where we're at in our stormwater, our current stormwater planning, that we don't really even have some of those baseline conditions built. It's, I don't know how much decision-making is just kind of laying those baselines and trying to understand
I think so.
where we go from here. I don't know, maybe there's room for a couple at-large community people to add to that that are interested maybe or something.
And again, an important part of that is, is public input that we would have through public meetings.
And it is critical information to be able to continue our street projects because there are places where the drainage needs to be improved, and I assume this will give us some help in knowing where to take it.
Yep.
So would something like alternate one with an additional instruction to staff to solicit interested members for further additions, or interested community members for further additions be?
That would be fine for alternate two without us having to identify who they are. Who they are. I mean, I just think...
Yeah, if we have someone that wants to volunteer, that's great, but we're not going to solicit that.
Yeah. But I think, would that be, would you be able to manage that?
I think so.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion. Alternate two without us identifying specific persons.
Just so I'm clear, this is a motion to approve the contract with MEASAC with a not-to-exceed cost of $675,163 and approve an advisory committee with the identified members and others, not yet identified?
Sure.
And authorize the city manager to execute contract documents?
As they indicate their interest, and the committee can manage it.
Okay.
We don't need all that much.
Okay. And so we have a motion in a second to accept alternate two and to approve this contract. Please vote.
You know, we always say we want volunteers, so that's...
Right. Well, I just would hate to turn away somebody who's really interested in it.
Thank you.
With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Monty. Item 8C, Development Progress Report by a new member of our staff named Paul Dennison.
That's my fraternal doppelganger.
Hello, Paula, how are you?
I'm fine. Every so often, we have an opportunity to present before the Planning Commission and the council, which gets the word out to the public about the status of the city's economic development that we have. So this presentation before you this evening covers July 2017 to July of 2017. So this presentation before you this evening covers July 2017 to July of 19, so it's a two-year time period. The map up on the screen, those are all of the permits that were issued in that time period. That includes minor additions, even if it's just coming in to get a roof permit, to extend a porch, something like that. But it also includes all of the new activities that we've had in the city. The blue, as you can see, are dining, pink retail, green housing, and then the orange is the miscellaneous. So what this entails is a lot of different activities that have been going on in Stillwater. You'll see a number of new restaurants, some like Wendy's have torn themselves down and rebuilt and improved their properties. We have a tremendous amount of retail that is continuing. Some of those are major investments to existing retail developments and others are quite new to the city of Stillwater. So we get into the housing in the green. The trend recently has been a lot of the fraternities and sororities are rebuilding themselves. So that's what you will see a lot of on this page. But there's also a number of other housing, there's single-family homes and there's apartment complexes. And then the ranch is under new ownership and they're continually working to finish it up so that it can be the senior living facility. The orange is the miscellaneous. This is sort of our, if it can't fit in the other three places, it just sort of gets placed in here. The majority of what you'll see on here is going to be Oklahoma State, Stillwater School District, Stillwater Medical Center, and Meridian. Those are the major investors in our community at this point in time, although you do see some of the other industrial and service activities going on within the city. Downtown, we always pull out downtown just because it amazes us that there is continually something coming in and happening in the downtown area, not just the new enterprises or relocated ones, but also the Stillwater Cultural District. We think that is going to be such a phenomenal addition to the community of Stillwater, and that's listed at the bottom of the screen. So that results in new or very large activities, 14 dining, 23 retail, 12 housing, and 18 miscellaneous. Again, it's for that two-year time period. But what we did find interesting was 226 one- and two-family new housing starts throughout the community, and they're spread throughout. They're not just all located in one or two concentrated areas. They are spread throughout the community. So residential permits, what we have been noticing here lately, they are on the decline. A lot of that is because we're running out of buildable, available lots in Stillwater. Many of those that are platted and are available, they're already committed to certain builders, so it's not an opportunity for others to come into our community. Commercial permits, we see this all the time, it's a cycle. When residential's down, commercial is usually up and vice versa. So just half of 2019, we are already over half of what 2018 commercial permits, the number that have been issued. So we're anticipating a good finish to the year on commercial permits. We also include the residential and commercial permit valuations. This is the residential, of course, it's declining based on the decline in the permits that we have been issuing. And the commercial, oh, there, commercial valuation, here again, we think it's going to be right on track. You'll notice that 2015 and 2016, those are really high commercial valuation numbers. That was the Stillwater Energy Center. That was the ranch when it was permitted, and that was some of the high-rise apartment complexes around town. So all of those sort of fell in and happened within those two-year periods. So that's why it's a little escalated, but we are on track for the commercial. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to let everybody know that we're open for business and we're in good shape.
Paula, one of the questions that I get a lot from individuals is just where are we at with development of large apartment buildings and have we saturated the market? And what is that climate looking like?
We do believe that the market is pre-saturated right now. What we are seeing is development of apartment complexes further away from campus, so not necessarily the student, and fewer bedrooms. So there's a lot of senior apartment complexes that are coming in that we're seeing more of than anything right now. There has been interest in the last few years of additional student housing developments like the high-rise apartments, and right now those companies are saying, "We're just going to wait and see."
Thanks.
You guys are still maintaining the website to kind of help people?
Yes, the development projects.
Plenty of texts, "Hey, what's going on on Country Club at Sixth?" and "What's going on there?" Those are all kept up to date on the web?
Yes, they are. We also have on the website, under the building permit, we have an ongoing, you can check for September of last year what the permitting was, but it does indicate the address, what the permit issued was for. So it's a little, with the development projects on the website and then the information of permits that have been issued, it's good, two pieces of information that the public can more than easily access through the website.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item 10, ordinances on first reading. Ordinance number 3440 and ordinance amending ordinance 3424 approving corrections to the amended Stillwater reinvestment plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Land Project Plan, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Norman, you want to, these are just a couple of...
Housekeeping, basically. As the recitals in the ordinance 3440 indicate, there was an error in the denominator, the calculations used to determine the allocations for the various entities that receive the distributions under the TIF, and so this corrects that.
Yeah, okay. I think this was something that Dr. Major over at Meridian and other folks kind of looked at and said, "Hey, we need to make sure this is, we're doing this correctly."
Yes, that's my understanding.
So we appreciate them jumping in and helping make sure this was worded correctly. So councillors, any questions or comments on this item?
No.
Or motions?
Motion. Go ahead. A motion to advance ordinance number 3430 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 3440 to second reading, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second reading. Ordinance 3441, an ordinance closing the alley right-of-way that extends east and west between Duncan Street and Husband from 8th Avenue to 9th Avenue, and the alley right-of-way that extends south from 8th Avenue to mid-block before 9th Avenue, improperly commonly known as Block 34, original town Stillwater, addresses 218 West 9th Avenue. This was an item we approved during our last meeting. Is there any further question or motion on this item?
Motion to vote to second reading, ordinance number 3441.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance this item to second reading, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 3441 is advanced to second reading.
Mayor, on the first ordinance, do we have to do a separate emergency?
Would you clear the emergency on the second read, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It takes us to 10B on second reading, ordinance 3439. Before I read this one, this is our form-based code ordinance that just corrects the public, private realm portion of the ordinance, and we leave the public realm piece until we've got our streetscape plans together.
Yes, and this ordinance reflects all changes through your first reading, and it is set to publish on Wednesday, assuming there are no further changes.
Okay. Before I read it, councillors, were there any questions or comments about the text of this ordinance?
I don't know. Okay.
Okay. All right, so on second reading, ordinance 3439, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code to delete in its entirety Appendix One Form-Based Codes, Articles 1 through 4, including Sections 4.1 through 4.10, and all images and tables, and creating a new Appendix One Form-Based Codes, Article 1, Transact Zone Descriptions, Article 2, Regulating Plan, Article 3, General Provisions, creating Section 3.1, Contensive Application and Development Plan, Section 3.2, Pedestrian Environment Provisions, Section 3.3, Vehicle Parking Provisions, Section 3.4, Landscape Provisions, Section 3.5, Signage Provisions, Section 3.6, Stormwater Provisions, Section 3.7, Architectural Provisions, Transact 4, T4 Design Framework, Transact 5, T5 Design Framework, Transact 6, T6 Design Framework, Table 5, Permitted Use Per Transact, and Table 6, Building Configuration. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 3439.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3439, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that ordinance is adopted. All right, that takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Norman?
Nothing to report today.
Thank you, Mr. McNichol.
Yes, sir, thank you, I have several items. First one, we're all rather sad about. This is Liz Hirsch's last city council meeting as city clerk. She will be leaving us on September 20th after 17 years of service to the city of Stillwater. Liz will be joining the staff of Grand Lake Mental Health at their new office in Perry, which is much closer to her home, like five minutes. Teresa Kadavy will be assuming the city clerk duties, and I will bring a recommendation for her appointment to that position at the council on October 7th meeting. Liz, we appreciate your service. We're going to miss you, and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Another item, sir, is a Veterans Assistance Town Hall. It's set for Monday, September 30th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. in this room at Stillwater Municipal Building. Stillwater residents who are interested in veterans assistance programs are encouraged to attend to learn about the program's options and ask questions during a question-and-answer session. Learn more at Stillwater.org. And finally, we would really appreciate this because then we don't have to table items and bring them back. On a number of recent land use items, city staff have gone to the subject, private property and found public hearing signs removed, taken down, and placed on the ground or bent in such fashion as they cannot be read. These signs are required by state law for public hearings on land use items such as rezonings and specific use permits. We ask that these signs not be removed, taken down, or damaged.
Thank you. Yeah, that keeps the neighbors from knowing what's going on on those items, so please leave those signs up. Councillor Zanotti?
Yes, here is a fun fact you might not know. Tomorrow, September 17th, is Constitution Day, and I'm proud to say Meridian takes part in that every year and has our students interact, and I actually go out there and know what I know and know what I don't know. So it's a gentle reminder that we celebrate the joining together of our nation under a single document. And with that being said, I'd like to also remind each of you the importance of participating in the U.S. Census and making sure you get counted accurately. Find everything you need to know about the upcoming census at PayneCountyCensus.org.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, we've, the city has released several podcasts recently. Some topics include the 2020 census, recycling, and the police department's SWAT team. Tune in to FYI Stillwater on Spotify, Apple Podcasts, or online at Stillwater.org.
Those are really good.
They're very good.
They really are. And if you haven't had a chance to listen to it, there's good discussion of some in-depth topics that you might hear us talk about for five minutes on an item, but you get to hear more about them. Recycling is a good example, the census, that sort of thing. So if you listen to podcasts or even if you don't, check those out and get more info. Yes, sir.
I'll give you a quick update. We were talking about citizens committees a moment ago. We've had 26 applications so far for the recycle committee.
Absolutely.
I think that's a record.
That's great.
That's good. There's a lot of interest in the topic.
That's right. So if you're interested, that's open still till a week from today.
Okay, one more week to apply for the recycling committee. Councillor Jaloski?
Norman, you just stole my thunder. That was my announcement. But that's okay.
Remind us again. I apologize.
Not at all. So we are, I guess, I don't know, we have 26, but we are still seeking applicants for the Citizens Recycling Task Force. Members of that task force would provide input, ideas, and direction for the future of the city's recycling program. You can apply online at Stillwater.org/citizensboard until September 23rd. I think it's remarkable that we have that many people that are interested in supporting on this topic. I think the more ideas, this is one of those topics, I think the more ideas, the better. The more creative we can be, the better. I think there's realities that we all need to kind of work through, but I think being creative and having the opportunity for citizens to be a part of that creativity and hopefully some energy around that would be remarkable.
Absolutely. And while you're on there applying to be on the recycling committee, take a look at all the other boards and committees that are available.
Yeah, we'll take the volunteers and distribute those volunteers.
There are some other boards on there that we've got openings on, so please check out other ways that you think you might be able to get involved in Stillwater. I have a note that our total tax collections in August were up 3.3% from last year, collection total of just over 2.6 million in both sales and use tax. That's on our June 2019 transactions that get reported in July and we actually get in August. So that's good news. You can see a full monthly report of all of our tax collections, you can see the full budget, you can see all the budget reports, you can see all kinds of information at Stillwater.org. There's a whole budget center on the website with a ton of reports and information about money and how we're doing. So if you're interested, take a look. Did you have one other item?
Mayor, I do have a request. I'm asking if we can have an update on Strickland Park and on Block 34, the ground clearing at our next meeting.
Okay. We'll make it up.
We can.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the end of the agenda. If there's nothing else, I'd hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater City Council meeting, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the city council meeting is now adjourned. That takes us to the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for September 16, 2019. I'll call this meeting to order. We can jump right down on this agenda to item six, resolutions. Resolution number SUA-2019-2, a resolution approving and adopting revision 21 for the electric rate general service tariff for the city electric utility in regard to electric vehicle charging stations. Mr. Lawrence Smith, how are you?
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. We currently have three electric vehicle charging stations that are being installed in Stillwater, and once those are installed, the owner of them will become a customer to the utility. So we need an electric vehicle charging rate, which we do not have at present. We are working on that as part of our cost of service study, but it will not be done in time for the charging stations to come on. So we need a bridge, and the bridge is to modify the general service rate tariff that we have to allow for resale of electric. This has been done by the Corporation Commission for Non-Pubblically Owned Utilities to address this with electric vehicle charging stations. So I do have a recommendation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions before.
Trustees, any questions for Lauren before we give the recommendation?
Lauren, could you tell us where the three stations are?
Yes, ma'am. Boomer Lake, Strickland Park, and in between the, at the library, in between the library and the, I think it's Prairie...
Prairie.
What?
Prairie Arts Center.
Yeah, Prairie Arts Center, yeah.
So on the north side of Library?
Yep.
And are there more that were, is that...
There were lease agreements for two other places, one at Block 34 and then one at the community center. I believe they're starting to kind of reevaluate that based on the charging stations that they got as part of a grant, and if they would be, they feel like they would be more useful in another city. So they, there potentially could be two more going there.
Okay. Let's hear your recommendation.
Okay. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the resolution 2019-2, allowing the exemption for the resale of electricity for EV charging stations only as stated in the attached revised GS rate tariff.
So I probably should have asked this a second ago, but this is a rate, we're charging the people who own the electric vehicle charging station, and then they charge a separate rate that they set basically to the actual user.
Yes, they'll add a little premium to it and resale.
Okay. So these are stations that, I guess you use them just like a... Okay. So these are stations that, I guess you use them just like a gas pump?
Just like a gas pump. Put a credit card in and hook up and go walk around the park and come back and your car's charged, or, or wherever you're at. They were strategically placed, Strickland Park, with, for access to the stadium, the OSU stadium, as well as all the activities that go along at the park, so.
I have a coworker who, who actually lives in Dallas who asked me about this the other day. He heard we were doing this, and he thought about getting an electric vehicle and wanted to know if these were going to be open soon, so he could potentially charge at Stillwater, so.
Absolutely.
Definitely interested in these things. All right, trustees?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation to approve resolution two thousand nineteen-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, staff's recommendation and the resolution two thousand nineteen-two are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. That takes us to the end of this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. I will now call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for September sixth, two thousand nineteen. September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, that is. The only item on this agenda is a report from officers and boards from the general council.
Oh, excuse me. For executive session presented to twenty-five OS subsection three oh seven, C-eleven, for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property financing or the creation of proposal to entice the business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate confidentiality of the business.
Thank you, sir. Any other reports? Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion. To adjourn. Go forward.
Motion to enter executive session, second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we'll now enter executive session.